Good evening, everyone. I think we are two. Go ahead and get started. So this is the Wednesday, April 7th, 2021, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the planning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting to the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: either via a link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was being available via the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all of the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. The instructions for public input are as follows. For those members of the public that are joining this meeting via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raise hand button. To use this feature, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. You'll see the hand raised up, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. Or you can use the chat function. Either use the default, which is everyone, which means everyone will see your message, or chat Mark Healy. Do not send the message to Christine Woodbury, as she is unable to review messages during the meeting, and do not use the Q and A in that section. Will not be checked during the meeting.
Yeah, I hope it's already...
For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement during a hearing, the board attorney will swear you win. After speaking, if you're on the WebEx feature, please press the lower hand button, so we know you don't want to speak again. Or calling in, press star three again. All right. So with that, we can do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Christine, you can call the roll.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Oral Hauck?
Here.
Ahir Rafiq?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mustafa Mansray, I don't see. Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Carol Schmidt?
Here.
Sammy Shavon?
Here.
And Chairman Arcini?
Here. So first order of business is minutes from the... Since we had no meetings in March, I don't think. We have some minutes to take care of from January 20th, 2021. And if there are no comments or corrections, I'll entertain a motion for those minutes.
I'll move them.
I'll second Bob.
I'm sorry, who moves them?
Bob Thomas.
Oh, Bob Thomas, okay.
And I second them.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Oral Hauck?
Yes.
Ahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas? Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Okay, so we have the minutes from February 3rd, 2021 as well.
I love that. That's awesome.
Okay. Thanks. I will second again, to make things easy for you, Christine.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Oral Hauck?
Yes. Yes.
Ahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Sammy Shavon?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes. We have one resolution tonight from Sycamore Developers LLC, PLN 17-0008, extension of time.
I would move the resolution.
You move it, Bob?
I move it to approve.
I will second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes, but how long can they keep on doing this?
What happened?
How long can they keep on getting extensions? Isn't there a limit?
I already asked that question. They're aware. I believe in looking at it, Mr. Linus thought that they had one more. But I did question that as well.
I believe the maximum is three.
That's correct. That's correct.
Then this is their third. Because given that the plan was approved in '17, I think, since it has a '17 number to it, this would make the third and final extension, I do believe.
However, they may also be entitled to an extension because of the COVID-19. But they would have had to have certified their approval, and I don't know if they did that.
Well, I can talk to Mr. Linus again, but as soon as I saw this come across again, I reached out to him, and I asked him, how many times has he done this? Because I remember them as well. But I'll follow up, Mr. Clark, and if that works for you, I'll follow up, or I'll send an email and have him respond to both of us, so you're aware.
Great, thank you.
Mark, not Mark, I apologize. Mike, do you want to be on that email as well?
Sure. I mean, Frank's been around a long time. He should know what he's doing, but it would be great to know what the ultimate...
All right, I'll get that out tomorrow. Okay, I'm sorry. Oral Hauck?
Yes.
Ahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
All right, Jennifer. Thank you.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes. We have no discussion items tonight on the agenda that I can see, so we'll go into public comment. As a reminder to the public, this part of the public comments are restricted to general planning topics that don't have a hearing of their own tonight. So if you're here for any of the three hearings that we have on the agenda, those will have their own open public comment expressly for that topic. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to open to the public.
Move to open to the public.
Second.
Second.
Okay, the meeting is open to the public for any general comments. If you wish to comment, go to Participants and raise your hand if you're on WebEx, or star three if you're listening.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand at this point for general planning comments.
Do not either.
And we move to close the public comments section.
We'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move into our hearings. We have something close to home here, Franklin Township, PLN 21-0003.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I'm bringing in, I made Vince Dominack a panelist. He's knowledgeable about the subdivision, and since he can speak the language of land use, if you will, he's going to give an overview of the proposal to the board.
Sounds good. Welcome, Vince. Long time. Hope you're well.
Great to see you. You hear me okay?
We can.
The Honorable Mr. Clark, and I assume you want to swear me in?
Swear you win. Yes, I do. Raise your right hand, please, Vince.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Vincent Andrew Dominick Jr. I am the Township's Economic Development Director, with my offices located at 475 Demont Lane, Somerset, New Jersey.
Wonderful.
It's great to see you all, especially with everything with COVID. This is a rather simple application. The Board of Education, as you can see on the map, owns the existing Lot 12, Block 3702. It's approximately four acres in size. The Board of Education wishes to subdivide it into two lots. Lot 12.01, that's a little over 2.2 acres, that they plan on transferring to the library board, and Lot 12.02, that they will keep and consolidate into their existing properties. As a matter of background, not for the subject of this application, because tonight is only for this minor subdivision, but I'll talk a little bit further in a minute. The purpose of the transfer of lots in the subdivision is for the Board of Education to transfer 12.01 for a satellite office for the library. They will be coming back, and they will be submitting full site plan applications. So the board and the public will have ample opportunity to deal with the site plan with all the site issues, drainage, traffic, lighting, screening, and everything else. The only thing that we're talking about tonight is the minor subdivision. The existing lot, a little over four acre lot, is conforming, except for it is an existing through lot, and it has insufficient frontage on Garden Avenue. It requires 100 feet. It has 50. Lot 12.01 is a conforming lot. Like I said, that will be consolidated as part of just later on with the rest of the board. The lot that is proposed for the library to be transferred over to them does have one variance, which is the existing variance for the whole lot, where the insufficient frontage on Garden Avenue, 50 feet versus 100 feet minimum. Mark can opine on that in a minute. There is one report that the Technical Review Committee prepared that has eight comments. Every one of those comments will be complied with fully. It's the township's opinion that the one variance that's being seeked is de minimis in nature, and it is an existing variance condition. Once again, mainly for the public, the application for tonight is only for the breaking of this lot, a subdivision into two separate lots. The subject of tonight is not to discuss the proposed site plan that will happen in the months ahead, and there'll be ample opportunity at a public meeting that will be noticed, and the board will have the typical opportunity they have to discuss every issue that they have with the typical site plan. With that, I would ask Mark Healy to give some pre-planning testimony regarding the subdivision.
Yeah, well, Vince, you pretty much covered everything. Just to make it clear, Vince, I believe that the lot that's going to be transferred to the library is the lot that's in the front, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the school board is going to retain that rear lot, and then that rear lot is then going to be consolidated and made part of the larger school property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and the reason I'm clarifying that is that the only variance is, again, if you see on the top of the map there, there's Garden Avenue. That is a public right-of-way, so that's technically a frontage. And the requirement is 100 feet, and that width is 50. I think sometimes you hear the term "technical variance." I think this is definitely one that qualifies as a technical variance in that it is an existing condition. Currently, the reason it's a variance is because it's a new lot that's being created, so we technically make them seek and obtain a variance in that situation. But the subdivision is not creating a new variance or exacerbating a variance in any way. So that's why, again, I think that term "technical variance," which isn't, I don't think it's anything in the law, but it's a very commonly used word in land use. This would definitely qualify as a technical variance. Otherwise, again, both of the lots fully comply. As Vince said, there was a TRC report. I think the only two comments of any substance is comment three, which is incorporated into the plan. In the lower portion of the plan, you see a gray-hatched or gray-shaded area, and that is an access and maintenance easement to allow the continued access by the school district to the school. That's obviously needed. And actually, that's really the only, that's really the only issue of substance in the TRC report. The rest are just very boilerplate comments for any minor subdivision.
Mr. Chairman?
Hey, Jim.
I would echo Mark's comments that it's a technical variance, that the subdivision is not creating the variance, and the board could find that the variance is justified under the flexible C2 analysis. The benefit to the township is the creation of a lot that will house a satellite library. Very valid and important public purpose. I think the board could find that there are no detriments from granting the variance, and that the benefit to the town substantially outweighs any detriment.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add one more thing, which is, as a minor subdivision, if it wasn't for the fact that that one lot had frontage on Garden, it'd go to the Minor Subdivision Committee without a hearing. Again, and that speaks to essentially the minor nature of the application as far as this subdivision is concerned.
So, yeah, since we're only discussing the subdivision tonight, I have no issues with it. I... Very, very kind of simple. I'm glad to hear the plan is coming back, because there may be, depending on what that plan is, questions that we might have. But for now, just creating the lot line makes a lot of sense. So that's my only opinion. Do any of the board members have anything to add to that?
I have a quick question. This is Mahir. The street that turns left on Eden, it's going straight and becomes Clover, and then immediate left is Eden. Is that Eden or Clover? Because on the map, it shows Eden. If my memory serves me correctly, unless the street name has been changed. So Eden turns a sharp left, right, on the map, and becomes, on the given paperwork, it says Eden? So I think that's Clover, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, Eden makes a sharp left and becomes Baylor Street. That goes to the school. And if you didn't make that sharp left and continues, it turns into Clover Place.
So does it still remain Eden?
Well, yeah, nothing will change as far as the street names. I think when you look on the map, I think Clover technically, it's kind of a paper street, if you will, in front of this lot. I think Eden turns into Clover, but I guess really the answer is, it is what it is in that whatever is existing, this proposal doesn't change that, so...
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If none, I will make a motion to open this meeting to the public for this topic. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public or comment on this application as it only pertains to the subdivision, because we heard the building will be coming back.
Yep, and I do see two members of the public. So before I open it up to the first person, again, I'll remind the public that if you wish to speak, if you're participating with WebEx, you could do the raised hand function, or if you're calling in, you can press star three. So I'm going to bring up, excuse me if I mispronounce your last name, Christopher Brochius.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's a perfect pronunciation. May I comment? It was commented by somebody on this meeting that there are no detriments to this project, and I oppose this project. I'm a resident of Central Avenue. And I am sorry to contradict whoever said there's no detriments, but in fact, there are detriments. There is really shoehorning this library facility into an already high-traffic area there. And I really, I live on Central, so I'm not going to get the brunt of it, but I feel bad for those poor people right on the face of this project. They're going to get a lot more high-traffic, and it's going to extend into the later hours of the evening. I oppose this whole application, and I'm asking the board to please vote no on it, because there are detriments. They're just being suppressed for whatever motivations I can only speculate. I asked the board to oppose this motion. That's all I have to say, sir.
Okay, then we have Veronica Evan here. Go ahead. You're unmuted, Veronica? Oh, sorry. Are you there, Veronica?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking my call. I echo Christopher Brochius's opposition to this subdivision. I live right behind, I'm right on Clover. I'm going to be right behind this library. The other concern I have is really that the open spaces around our area are disappearing very quickly. A house was just torn down down the street, so that's going to be another commercial place. Also, the habitat is very important. There's a lot of wildlife living there. And the other reason for my opposition really is that it is going to change the, just the feel of the community. So I also request that the board deny this application, and I also request that, you know, other considerations for the impact to the community be taken into account. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I was unmuted, so I wasn't hearing you.
We do have a call-in number.
Oh, okay, great. Let's hear that.
It's 732419. I'll mute you at this point. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking my call. This is Annabelle, and I live at 60 Clover Place, like, two houses, I think, from where the proposed site is. And I just want to, before I ask my question, I just want to point out that we actually received a registered mail for the call-in number for this meeting. But when I used the access code on that, it wasn't working. So I tried the access code that's on the website, and that worked. So I wasn't sure if anybody is aware what should be the access code. So I got two access codes. It's 1734303163 that worked. The updated one that came more recently through a certified mail, which was 1736796396, did not work. I'm not sure if anyone is aware of that.
All right, well, thanks for pointing that out. I don't know if Christine or Vince, or I'm sorry, not Vince, Mark, could better address this, but I would generally always trust what's on the township site, because Christine and Mark control that, and they do a fantastic job at making sure everybody has the information. So it could be that, I don't know, something changed in that access between the time you got noticed and the time of the meeting. I'm glad you were able to figure that out, but you shouldn't have to. So I don't know, Mark or Christine, if you want to kind of look into that.
So, yeah, I mean, the notice, I mean, Jim, I'm sure can, you know, speak to this, but obviously, the notice that goes out to the public has to have the right information. Christine's in the process right now of looking into it.
My comment would be that, to the extent that there may have been a deficiency, it's been cured by the fact that the member of the public has been able to access the meeting.
It has, that's true. We only have to hope that she may not be the only one, and that she might have been lucky enough or smart enough to figure it out, and other people trusted their notice. So we definitely need to get that straightened out, especially for when it comes back with the actual site plan, just to make sure that everyone who wants it heard, can be heard. Did we get everyone? I still see raised hands, but I think there are people who already spoke. If you could please lower your hand, unless you have something else to say. The only thing I would comment to the two individuals who spoke directly to this application is, as was pointed out during the testimony, this is only for the subdivision itself, not for the building. Depending on what the building looks like, and its features, and all of the things that go into a site plan, that would probably be the best time to talk about that, because dividing the lot has no material impact at all. Building something on a lot does. And since we will hear that in a separate hearing, I think that would be the best place for those comments to be aired. And Jim, if you want to, from a legal perspective, I'd be happy to do that.
I'm happy to do so, Mr. Chairman. I think your analysis is correct, and my comment that there was no substantial detriments is limited solely to the subdivision and to the variance with regard to the frontage on Garden Street. There may be a totally different opinion when we get to the site plan aspect of this application.
Exactly, and really, we couldn't even talk about the features of the site plan, because we haven't seen it. The applicant hasn't come with it. It will be the subject of a separate hearing. So we're really only dealing with a line at this point that is invisible to everyone, but somebody who looks at the actual piece of paper. That's all we're doing tonight. So please stay tuned when the hearing for the actual site plan comes. Come back, and that'll be the time that we can discuss all of the features. And that would be the time when the board would take action on the actual building itself.
So I'll just repeat the chairman's suggestion that if you've already spoken, and if you could please put your hand down, that way, if a new member of the public comes on, we can see them more easily. So Jim, if I could just, I guess, echo the chairman's question about if, we don't know if another member of the public hadn't seen, had relied upon the access number. Should we postpone and try to confirm and make sure it's noticed correctly? Or make...
The answer is yes. I think when you're dealing with matters of notice, we have to err on the side of caution. We could have a person who was confused, or, for want of a better term, gave up. And we need to have complete unfettered access to these remote meetings.
Yep, totally agree with that. So we will figure it out. I would just say that personally speaking, if it were me, I would rely on the most up-to-date information, which is on the township website. But it's certainly logical that somebody could think that the notice would contain the correct information, and it should. So I think it's just incumbent upon everyone to get on the same page with that. So we will sort that out, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. So if there's no further comments from the public, which I don't see... So if there, if there's no further comments from the public, which I don't see, um, I would move to close, uh, close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, um, does any of the other board members, um, have any comments on this? Or if not, um, free to entertain a motion.
I, Mr. Chairman, I would just comment in response to Mr. Brozius that presumably when we get an applicant for site plan approval, there will be a traffic report and we can determine how much it would add to traffic on, uh, Clover Place and Eden Street.
Yeah, and, and as Councilman Chase said, there'll be a full site plan, full stormwater report, grading, the whole, all of the details that come with the site plan. Uh, just a question, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I thought based on what Jim said that it would be tabled.
What, I'm sorry, what, 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 what would be tabled?
The, the decision. If we don't know if, if there was an issue with the notice.
Uh, oh, um, yeah, I guess so. I guess we can't. So Jim, how do we, how do we handle this going forward? Um, do we re, do we have the applicant renotice? Hear this m- minor technical variance, uh, technical application again, and then have them come back with the actual site plan? Um, what's the best way to, to approach this?
Actually, uh, I think we should start over. It was not an involved application. I think we should renotice and republish. Mr. Dominic can come back on, uh, and, you know, his testimony was probably under 10 minutes. Uh, I doubt the board members will have any additional questions since they've had their questions answered this evening.
Yep, sounds, sounds good. So apologies to, to all for that, but I think it's, it's in the best interest to be, um, to be on the safe side. So we will table that vote and we will, um, hear them, um, hear them after renoting. So Jim, in terms of, of board obligations, in terms of time, since we have to ask them to renotice and everything, is there some sign of time constraint where we have to act as an old reset or how does that work?
I need to know from Christine when the application was deemed complete. But I, I highly doubt that the township will, uh, not grant us an extension if necessary.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if an extension is necessary, we will obviously grant it. I don't, I don't believe it is. We will renotice. And my assumption is we won't have time for the next meeting, but the first meeting in May, we, we will notice for that meeting.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, thanks Vince.
Do they want to come? Vince. Vince. Vince Dominic.
Yes.
Uh, the next, April twenty-first is the next meeting.
Yeah, but my assumption is that we won't be able to get the 10-day prior by that meeting because I, I have to put, get it in the newspaper because I'm assuming if the link was wrong for the individuals, I'm assuming it was wrong for the newspaper. So we won't have time. That's only two weeks from now. I would have had her already sent it to the newspaper. So I would say that err on side caution. We will renotice for the, whatever that first meeting in the May is.
So that would be May fifth.
Right.
May fifth.
All right. Well, that sounds, that sounds good. Thanks for working that out. All right, so, um, onward we go. Hopefully more success with an outcome. Crisco Properties LLC PLN twenty dash zero, 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 one, one.
Okay, I'll start bringing their folks in.
We might have to check the phone number in, oh, the notice sent to neighbors for each application. Because if the, if a wrong phone number was sent to neighbors for one application, it may have been to the others.
That's.
Ted, I'll go over and look if.
Good point.
One more, bring the people in, I'll go over and look and let you know.
Well, here, here's what we could do to save ourselves some time, um, and to relieve Chris. So here's my suggestion. We take a five-minute, 10-minute hiatus. Christine can check what was noticed versus what was on the township website. If they match, we move ahead. If they don't, we don't. Having that information, she could also do that for, um, the third, the third hearing as well.
No.
Yeah, it'll be five minutes, Mike. I'll be right back.
All right, we'll adjourn for five minutes. Look at about eight, eight twelve to be back. Bio break. Whatever you need.
This is Phil and, uh, Ellenberger there, right? Yeah. Uh, for your information, I had her approved the, the COVID. Nothing I can do about it. Can't be people from mind.
Yeah, he's on.
My script.
Doctor Chase. Oh, everything's done.
Oh, you're back. All right. Do you have, do you have a resolution for the party?
Did I do what? I'm sorry.
I said, do you have a resolution for us?
Yeah, the notices are, the other notices are fine.
Okay. Fantastic. I'll give people like another couple minutes in case they, uh, went out since I said eight twelve.
You weren't supposed to be there.
Uh, Mark, this is Dave Schmidt. Um, can you share a screen so I can put an exhibit up while everyone comes back?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll do that once we get started. Yeah, so you're center, but just don't share your screen yet.
Okay.
Board's going to want to see your, your pretty faces at first.
Dave. Oh, there.
I, I heard him before. I already clicked.
Those fast fingers over there.
Yeah, they want to see, because they're going to have to swear you in and see you raise your hand and all that stuff before, you know, just for a few minutes before we get started.
All right, I have, um, eight twelve. So let's, let's reconvene. Let's see if we, we have everybody. I think we do. Um, okay, so, um, glad to hear things can move forward. So this is Crisco Properties LLC PLN twenty dash zero, 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 one, one. So take it away.
You want us to? You want us to move? Forward?
Yes, you can go forward.
Hey, uh, my name is Richard Schausman. I'm the attorney for the applicant Crisco Properties. Uh, we have, uh, first witness would be Mr. David Schmidt, who's the design engineer. And, uh, we have the applicant, Mr. Phil Crisco. We have the architect, Mr. Thomas Ellenberger. I assume that the notice is correct and the service was correct and the affidavit of publication is okay. Uh, so. Okay, is that correct?
Yes, everything is fine.
Okay, fine. Uh, with further, no further ado, would you, uh, Mr. Clark, and have Mr. Schmidt sworn in in accordance with the municipal annuals law, say in Jersey, he will give an overview and briefly discuss the, uh, professional reports. Mr. Ellenberger will discuss the, uh, architecture very briefly. And Mr. Crisco will discuss the operations of the proposed site plan, which is in addition to the existing building that exists, uh, previously, uh, since the year two thousand and four, by Milton got the approval at that time. Uh, this is an addition to that site plan. So please have Mr. Schmidt sworn in.
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, David Schmidt, seventy-seven Karnes Place, Belme, New Jersey.
Can you spell your last name, please?
S C H M I D T.
I'll find the witness.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, would you please give us the benefit of your educational background, please?
Um, president of, I'm the president of DS Engineering. Um, I attended, uh, college at NJIT. I have a graduate degree, DS degree in engineering. I'm a professional engineer. My license number is thirty-nine, four, oh, nine. I have been a professional engineer for twenty-six years and I have been a design engineer overall for thirty-five years. I presented site plans and, uh, mostly site plans in Franklin Township either. It's going to be the planning board or zoning board. So I have been sworn in as an expert witness, uh, with those projects previously.
Excellent. You're eminently qualified, so please proceed.
Good.
Do I have the floor? Do I move?
Yes, please.
Um, we're working. Did we have my screen up in front of everybody?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we have, um, all right, this is the existing features plan. Um, the exhibits I'm showing today are all part of the approval or, or part of the submission package that I supplied the, uh, planning department. This is the existing features plan for lot fifty-nine, oh, one, block five, oh, seven, point, one, four. It was dated July twentieth, twenty, twenty. Last revised December fourteenth, twenty. Um, this is for Crisco's properties, block fifty, five, oh, seven, point, one, four, lot fifty-nine, oh, one. It's docket number PLN twenty, zero, 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 one, one. It's in Franklin Township. The property is located on the east side of Elizabeth Avenue. To the left of your screen, which I have a pointer, hopefully you can see it, is Elizabeth Avenue. Um, the, the lot area is five acres. The property was zoned M-one, which is light manufactured district. Uh, it was rezoned in December twenty-eighth, twenty, twenty, and is currently now in the B-one zone, um, which is business and industry. Uh, what Phil Crisco is proposing and what is currently existing on the property is a, uh, a, a use that's permitted in this zone. The site is currently developed with a fifteen-hundred-square-foot office, a four-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot storage building. The total building is six thousand square feet, which is a, just a rectangle building on the property with the front portion of the property, uh, fifteen-hundred square feet is utilized for an office. The height of the building is existing twenty-three feet. Uh, it utilizes an existing paved entrance off Elizabeth Avenue with adequate site distance. Uh, the entrance was previously reviewed and approved by Somerset County Engineering Department in two thousand and five. We resubmitted with this, uh, addition application to Somerset County. Uh, and they have accepted the entrance as is. Uh, the site distances are, are adequate. We did site profiles and, and, uh, site, uh, profile distances that demonstrate we had adequate site distance. Nothing has changed out there. Um, I visited the site. The access is acceptable just by eye. Um, it's also acceptable, uh, as the police department reviewed this application, that I don't think there's any accidents of record. Uh, they have no objections with this application and the intensifying of this addition is not going to make this entrance unsafe. Um, we have, there's adequate landscaping and lighting that currently exist. Obviously, it was approved with the previous, uh, uh, application. So we have lighting and landscaping that's already installed. Um, there are seventeen required parking spots for the previous approval. Uh, there were nine by eighteen parking spots and they exist. Um, to the right of the property, and I'll, trying to get the, the mouse here moving. Uh, to the right of the property, we have a shaded area, which is the wetland, uh, which is, is, is wetlands. And we have a wetland buffer existing in the rear of the property, which is the east. A letter interpretation issued by NJTUP has expired. A new wetland delineation was performed by DeBois Associates and submitted to NJDEP January twenty, twenty. Uh, there really is no, twenty, excuse me, twenty, twenty-one. Uh, there is no real major changes to the wetland configuration that was previously approved. Um, there was a little, little adjustment of the line, but not much at all. Um, that is being reviewed, reviewed by NJDEP and I would, I'm aware that NJDEP did do a site visit last month and my wetland evaluation consultant reached out to them and there was no objections with the line as is shown on these plans. Um, the, there are no critical slopes on the property and the property slopes in the westery direction to Elizabeth Ave. They are like basically a breach in the center up here. The water from the front of the building goes to Elizabeth Ave. The water that goes from the rear of the building traverses to the wetland area and you can see in this area, there's a small defined ditch where it drains to. Uh, there is no increase in stormwater management, uh, in stormwater runoff with this proposal. Um, the drainage patterns have not been changed whatsoever and we don't think there's any violation of directing water where it never went before. Um, the soil is in the Brunswick shale, which is capable of handling the, uh, of load of three thousand pounds per square foot, which is fine for the building that we're proposing. Existing utilities, there is water from Franklin Township Water Authority, gas and electric, PSCNG. And sewer is onsite septic in the southern corner, southern, western portion of the, of the site, which I'm circling now with my pointer, is where the existing septic system is. And the phone is Century Link. Um, I'm going to go into the proposal of what we're proposing and I just wanted to point out if everyone can see on the southern property line, the R-four, R-forty zone is located lot fifty-eight, which I'm circling right now. And one of the requests from the planner and one of the requests from CME is requesting a fence to be constructed from the, from the beginning of the property line along the adjacent property line up to the wetland buffer line. I'm pointing from here to here. I'm just pointing this out as I'm going to switch screens. But you could see as part of, of the Mylon construction approval. I'm pointing from here to here. I'm just pointing this out as I'm gonna switch screens, but you could see as part of the Mylon construction approval, we had to provide a extensive landscape buffer along here and I just wanted to show you all the trees. We are willing to put the fence in, but I am west, requesting a design waiver because we feel that erecting a fence would probably, uh, remove some of the trees to get the, the fence to, to run along this common property line. Um, I feel that a fence isn't needed. I would, would like the, if additional landscaping can be done in, in lieu of the fence, we're willing to do that. But I, I just feel that the offense i- is not required and, and as I request that, uh, real, design relief, I just wanted you to have a visual of what, what is on the existing features plan, because the site plan does not carry, uh, the landscape plan.
Before you move to your next exhibit, we'll designate this existing conditions plan as exhibit A one.
Okay.
Um, is that the, is that the end of your testimony?
I'm pulling up another.
Oh, sorry.
Exhibit, I'm just, uh, this is my first time here, I'm just trying to make sure I get this, this right.
Since, since you're testifying a- as an engineer, I think it would probably be appropriate, um, to probably discuss, um, any engineering comments and, um, the planner's report as it pertains to the site. Um, and then depending on what other witnesses come forward, what's appropriate for them. But I think you're probably the best person to answer any questions regarding most of the staff reports. Um. And, and you can only, you only need to focus on what it is that you feel you'd like to discuss with the board or can comply with. If you can comply with everything, you can just say that.
I, I have it all spelled out, if I can get this exhibit up, we're, we're set.
Alright.
I don't know how I got so lucky the first time. Did it come up? Are we good? Site plan?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone?
It looks good.
Yep.
I guess this is the site plan.
Okay, we have the site plan up. Um, okay, this is the site plan, um, that was submitted as part of the submission package. It is the site plan, uh, on the right-hand side is the site plan, lot fifty-nine point oh one, block five oh seven point one four. It was dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty, revised December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Exhibit A two.
A two, exhibit, okay. The applicant intends to construct a six thousand ninety-five square foot two-story building in front of the existing storage building. Um, we have the rectangle building in the front and we're proposing a angular type building in front of the building, which is currently a lawn area. Um. In, the existing office will be converted to just six thousand square foot, uh, square foot total. So we have the office building located in the front, which is six thousand ninety-five, and then this, uh, six thousand square foot, um, storage and office building is just gonna be converted to six thousand square foot storage. The fifteen, the fifteen hundred square foot office will be removed from the rear structure. Uh, the area of the proposed building will construct, is currently gone. The expansion of the office building will require additional fourteen new parking spaces, nine by eighteen, and two new light bulbs are required to provide the lighting requirement for township standards. The increase in impervious surface coverage is six thousand two hundred and ninety-five square feet and will, will require full stormwater management. We are proposing an infiltration trench for the new ru- office roof runoff and we're also, uh, putting a, a rain garden in the south, southeast corner of the property to address the runoff from the new parking areas. So, per the New Jane, New Jersey State Standards, the roof runoff is clean water. We're putting an infiltration trench right in the front of the building to control that runoff for the additional parking that I'm putting in, in, in adjacent to the, the building and adjacent to the septic system. We're putting thirteen spaces along, uh, the existing access drive and a six more, uh, parking spaces along that access drive. But we're having a total of twenty-four spaces, I believe, I believe, uh, excuse me, thirty-one spaces. And we meet the parking requirements. Um, the stormwater management requirements are for the two, ten and the hundred. The two is reduced by fifty percent, the ten by seventy-five percent, and the hundred-year storm event is reduced by eighty-five percent. So the runoff that it currently exists is going to be reduced by those percentages. Um, twelve trees are being removed as a result of this proposed addition and five trees are being proposed. Per the ordinance, we need one point two trees. Uh, waivers and order variances. A design waiver is requested from Franklin Township Ordinance, section one twenty-two dash thirty-three point six. The applicant is requesting relief to, from providing sidewalks along the frontage, bicycle parking and electric vehicle charging stations. Um, there is no sidewalk in the near vicinity of Elizabeth Ave by our property. Uh, they're asking, per the ordinance, that they should be sidewalk along the frontage of the property, which would go nowhere, so we're asking relief from that. Um, most, this is not a commercial site, so most of the people that are coming here are, will not be taking their bicycles. So you really don't see a need for a bicycle rack, though we could provide one and we do not wish to put a charging station because this does not seem to need, need like a commercials facility, uh, a charging station. The second waiver we're requesting is a design waiver requested from Franklin Township Ordinance, section one twenty-two dash eighty-eight. The applicant is requesting relief from providing a twenty-six foot drive aisle, a twenty-four foot drive while, drive aisle is being proposed. The existing entrance is basically, it's a little bit wider than twenty-six, but it necks down to twenty-six feet. As I approach in, inward to my first parking stalls, I have a twenty-four foot wide aisleway, uh, throughout the, the site. Uh, most of the, the design standards for a drive aisle is twenty-four, your ordinance is twenty-six. Per CME letter, they were okay with the twenty-four foot aisleway, so I'm hoping that the board would agree to, to continue the twenty-four foot aisleway as we designed it. My third wa- waiver I'm asking for, and it's a, it's a, it's a request, as I just went over when I started with the existing site plan, is a design waiver may be requested from Franklin Township Ordinance, section four three 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 dash twenty. The applicant requests relief from providing a six-foot high fence along the property line adjacent to the R forty zone. My, my argument is the site was heavily landscaped to provide a buffer, which was pre, for the previous site plan approval. Uh, I, applicant feels that the vegetated buffer serves the need of a fence. In addition to fence, we may require some, if, if the fence had to be installed, we, we leave, some trees will have to be removed. Uh, the hours of operation for this facility be seven AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Seven AM to four PM Saturday, closed on Sundays, and there is approximately ten to twelve employees at the site. The applicant, Phil Crisco, is here tonight and he will discuss the oper- operation in detail. Uh, wastewater management, the site is serviced by existing septic system. The existing, the existing tanks will need to be relocated or, uh, new tanks will be installed. What the existing septic system size should be able to handle the proposed flow. The applicant is working with Patricia Elliott, County of Somerset, uh, Department of Public Health. And, uh, they're hammering out the final details of the redesign of the septic system, uh, with this, the, the pumps and the tanks. But we believe that the septic system does not need to be increased, it, the bed itself increased. But if there is a need, we can expand the laterals if need be. The anticipated wa- wastewater usages anticipated to be seven hundred and fifty gallons per day. Um, traffic, peak, peak trip count is anticipated to be eleven. It was originally for Mylon Construction to be four. No adverse impacts for, for the entrance, uh, the entrance will function safely, um, and there's no need of additional improvements to be made to that access. Um, the proposed building. Um, I'm gonna stop here, I'm gonna go to the proposed building. Does anyone have any comments on the site plan as I got through it? No?
Well, I'm gonna do some questions later, Dave, but, um, we'll, we'll just save it till all the witnesses are through. So, uh, just, just stay warmed up.
So just keep going.
I'm, I'm trying to get these screens up. Hi, I don't know why I'm having difficulty. I'm, I'm back to this one again.
So while you're doing that, I'll just, um, inform the board that when you, when you see an exhibit, uh, and if you wish to zoom in, if you put your cursor over the, um, what's being displayed, on the left-hand side, there's, uh, a little, um, like magnifying glass type thing where you can zoom in. So for example, that last exhibit was kind of small, but you can, if you wish, zoom in to the area that's being discussed.
Sorry, guys, I don't know where my icons went, but they have all disappeared.
Dave, are you bringing stuff up that's on the website?
What's that?
Are you bringing items up that are already up on the website?
No, no, my, it's for whatever reason, all the, you know, we're, you're flipping through all this stuff, um.
Oh, I was gonna see if I could help you by pulling it off the website.
It, it's, you know, you're, you're on a live web and they just disappeared for a second. I was like looking for them, but now we have it up, correct? Everyone has it?
Yes, yes, we can see it.
I can see it.
Okay. Okay, this is, uh, a proposed building, uh, was done by, uh, Walnut Design. It was dated June first, twenty twenty. Um, it was revised November fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, it was prepared by Tom Allenberger, who's with us, and he will go into a little bit more detail, uh, of the facade and what it's going to look like. Um, the building is six thousand zero ninety-five total, uh, it's a two-story building. The building height will not exceed the thirty-five foot maximum allowed. Uh, the proposed addition located in front of the existing loo, uh, is located in front of the existing aluminum storage building. All building setbacks and FAR conform. Um, the top, the facade material changes were made and for, we, we made some building facade changes in, in, in early April. Uh, Tom is gonna go over that, but the building size has not changed. Um, what I like to point out is, if you looked into Mark Healy's report, he shows the aluminum structure. It is basically a pole barn structure. I'm not gonna say it's an ugly building, I'm not, it's, it's just a square rectangle. I, I, you know, if we look in the screen that I, in front of you. I'm hoping you can zoom in. But I think the appearance of this building will be a lot better than what it currently exists and Tom will go into detail with that. Um, so we have, um, Phil Crisco is gonna testify on the use of, what he's intending to use for the building. Tom Allenberger will go over the building facade, um, and I'm just gonna finalize up where we're at. DRCC, we submitted to them, we had, uh, their permit number is twenty dash fifty-five eighty-six, very minor comments. We submitted to Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, twenty twenty dash forty-three eighty-one is their application number. Minor comments there, and Somerset County Planning Board, FL eight five seven colon zero zero four dash twenty S is Somerset County Review Letter, it was a one-page letter, very, very minor adjustment I need to make, and we are waiting for the NJDEP wetland permit. Um, we received a slew of review, uh, review memorandums, um, and we pretty much agree with all comments. And as you wanted me to go through the comments that we did not want to address, I'm gonna start out, uh, with, uh, Mark Healy's Township Planner Letter dated March ninth, twenty twenty. Um, the applicant agrees with all comments. Um, we need door, uh, the board direction on the, on the fence. If they want a fence, we'll put the fence, if not, we'll either put, mitigate with some additional landscaping. Um, the applicant has, it's in between, uh, DeSantis Construction and Crisco Properties. Uh, there's some activities that were done during the transfer of sale. Some materials were placed far in the rear property, uh, is not, uh, it's not encroaching any lots and it is not encroaching the wetland buffer, uh, but we will remove those materials and then replace it in kind with the vegetation that was out there originally, which I believe was just either fallow or lawn. So we'll mitigate the rear yard area, but I wanted to point out that we will do it. Uh, Mark has pointed out that he would like a barrier, um, so that this, uh, creeping of construction materials don't go back into the rear yard. Um, Phil Crisco has agreed, uh, to do it. We, we can't put curb because that would, uh, channel water in a direction I do not want it to go. I can, I, I want the water to be sheet flow to the stream. So we will come up with something, hopefully that Mark and I can agree on that will work to prevent, uh, any more, uh, construction activity in the rear of the property near the wetlands. Um, I did want to know, I think in Mark's report, I think the, um, the blue line that, that he has designating the property on figure two is a little bit slightly off. Um, I think it needs to be shifted upward a little bit, but there is no encroachments onto lot sixty oh one. Fisc associates prepared a survey, um, the survey was accurate and showed all the, uh, materials on site. But encroachments did occur after that survey to the rear of the property. So we agree with all Mark's, um, uh, comments, but we need direction on the fence. Uh, I have Robert J. Russo, CME Associates, his letter is dated April first, twenty twenty-one. The applicant agrees with most of the comments. Um, B eight, we are requesting a design waiver for the frontage sidewalk, the bike parking and charging station. Uh, B nine of his letter, design waiver requested for fence along the property, so I need direction on that. B ten is a design waiver requested for the aisle width, twenty-four feet proposed, where, and the required is twenty-six, so I need direction on that. Uh, B seventeen, he's requesting site distances and site profiles. We provided all that information. It is a county road, it is county jurisdiction, so we don't believe that we need to re-supply these documents as that entrance exists and is safe. Um, I mean, obviously, if it, it appeared to be an unsafe situation, I, I would redo them, but it, it, you can just drive out there and notice that your site distances are well for that, uh, type of road. Uh, C four, uh, utility chart, uh, he's requesting utility crossings, um, have a chart to show where the conflicts are. Well, I don't have the existing underground utilities locations, uh, there are just minor conflicts where there might be some things that we need to, to adjust, but all the lines that we're putting in don't require like a gravity feed. So we, we will, uh, I will document on the plans where the conflicts exist and note that the contractor needs to be aware of it, but I cannot provide a chart. So I'm requesting a relief from that comment. And the last one, uh, the wetland buffer, he says we have encroachments, which I do not agree as we had the fifty-foot wetland buffer line, um, staked out for Phil at the time of constru- uh, at, at the time of purchase, and those stakes are out there right now. We did have NJDEP visited the site, uh, they have not said anything, uh, about us encroaching into the buffer. Uh, the wetland flags are located, so you know, you can go out there from the, measure from the wetland line fifty feet and you'll notice that we should not be encroaching. If there are any encroachments, we have the right to, to mitigate them and I don't believe we need an NJDEP permit for, uh, restoring an area that was disturbed in a transitionary, uh, waiver, uh, transitionary buffer. So I want relief from F four. We have Officer Jose Ja- Jamie, the Traffic Safety, his letter was dated April first, twenty twenty-one, I have no comments. He had no comments, excuse me. Uh, John House, Fire Prevention, letter dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. He had a minor comment, which my applicant will comply. Uh, Christian Santiago, Franklin Township Sewer Authority, letter dated April first, twenty twenty-one, no comments. Franklin Township Environmental Commission, letter dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, no comments. And Patricia Elliott, County of Somerset Public Health, her letter was dated February twenty-first, twenty-fourth, excuse me, twenty twenty-one. And the applicant is currently working with, uh, Patricia right now. There is only one comment they need to address and we will get her sign off. Um, that's basically my, my, uh, presentation. I'm, I will be here for the most of this meeting, so, uh, you can ask questions and I can pull up exhibits as we go, but that is my presentation.
Just before we do that, Mr. Chairman, we'll mark the latest exhibit, SK six, as exhibit A three, please.
Yep, sounds good. Um, yeah, I made an extensive list of notes, uh, David, based on your testimony and we will get to those, um, once all the witnesses have finished presenting. So, well, thank, thanks for that and. So thank, thanks for that, and um you can continue with your next witness.
Uh Tom, that's you. Uh if you and Phil can uh log in and get sworn in.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh this is Tom Ellenberger, architect.
Raise your right hand, sir, please. Do you sound like you're trying to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you out?
I do.
Please give us your name and address.
Uh Thomas Ellenberger, um four Walnut Avenue, Sterling, New Jersey.
You spell your last name, please.
E L L E N B E R G E R.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ellenberger, uh when you give us the benefit of your educational background and professional background?
Certainly. Um I'm a graduate of Temple University. Um my New Jersey, I I'm licensed to practice architecture in New Jersey, License AI fifteen six six six. Um I've been licensed for almost eighteen years, and I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects.
Okay, and the building obviously was assigned by you from Mr. Frisco, am I correct?
That is correct.
And you visited the site, am I correct?
Correct.
The 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 witness is accepted as a certified architect, and um Tom, just while we, while we do, um you know, value the architecture, um just try to keep it kind of a high level. Um you know, we probably don't need great detail, but we're certainly interested in some of the features that that you want to probably talk about.
Understood, understood. Um hey, Dave, do you have the ability to put the, uh what we're looking at, I think, is not the latest version of the drawing?
That is correct.
Do you have the ability?
I do have the latest one. I just wanted to show the board what they were submitted, and so they have an idea of what what we're changing here.
So so a quick summary of what the change is, the the building, uh the parameters of the building are exactly the same. The changes are primarily in elevation uh in materials. Um the original submission had most, had predominantly a brick masonry facade and uh the revised elevation identical in volume, but um we're playing with uh a stucco exterior finish system. Um the revised drawing also has, you know, um updated window sizes. And uh but that's, that's basically it. On the interior, the only thing that changed is just the configuration of the stairway. Um but the function of the building is still a type-two building, steel frame building. Uh is identical to what was submitted in plan.
And in your view, the uh because of the materials and the design, the building will look more attractive from aesthetic point of view than exists there now, am I correct?
I I do. I'd also give a lot more design options as we move forward in the design.
Okay. Uh with that in mind, he gave you a brief view. The architectural plans are submitted. I would like to have Mr. Frisco be sworn in uh just briefly explain his operations for the proposed site. Should approval be given by this board?
Well, before we do that, we may have questions of the architect.
Okay, all right.
Well, we're, then we're just gonna save all the questions till the end. That's what we, that's what we tell the public, so um little bit different than when we're in person, I think.
Then let's, where the next witness?
Okay, Mr. Frisco, please.
Is that him? Yes.
Present.
Raise your right hand. Sound like you're trying to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you out.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Philip Frisco, forty-four Middle Avenue, Summit, New Jersey.
All right, here's your next witness. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Frisco, just identify who you are for the record.
Uh Philip Frisco, uh owner of Frisco Properties LLC and uh president of of Frisco Engineering and Construction, the tenant for the proposed uh office addition.
Okay, do you want to describe, should the board grant approval, what your operations for this property will be?
So uh the, the purpose of the office addition is um right now, uh it's basically just a warehouse. Our office function is operating out of Summit, and we're looking to condense our operation the necessity for an office building on the site. Um we are an engineering and construction management firm. Um as Dave discussed, we'll have at the high times, uh ten to twelve employees uh in the office. Most of the time, it'll probably be five to six. Uh some of our managers are usually in transit, but for the less, uh you know, expectation is reasonable type of twelve employees in these offices that are used just for general uh office purposes, personnel offices, files, a media production area for blueprints, et cetera. Um but basically, uh somewhat of a a low-level, a low-impact uh office function. And the position of the building was tried, uh was attempted to be placed to sort of uh create a more aesthetically pleasing uh frontage along Elizabeth Avenue uh to hide the uh somewhat older metal building. So um this facade with the brick and the uh a stucco drive it above it is fairly in line with a lot of the other commercial buildings uh further down Elizabeth Ave along Schoolhouse Road and whatnot. So we we think that it uh it is in kind with the other aesthetic buildings, uh commercial buildings that you have in town. Are there any questions?
If, if there are, we'll just, we'll save them. Is this, is this your last witness, by the way?
I have a couple of questions if there're.
Mr. Schatzman, is this your last witness? Mr. Schatzman?
Yes, sir.
Is this your last witness?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, now we can open it up to board questions, and so Bob, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Frisco. Are you there?
Yes, sir.
All right. The new building is replacing the building that exists there as a warehouse. Is that correct? I mean, the new building's an office building. The other building is gonna be uh completely storage for the most part?
Correct.
Does that mean that uh much of the clutter that's in the yard in the back of the property might possibly be moved inside the building and off the grounds?
That is, our expectation is to have the warehouse for full storage. Uh and then the existing parking lot will be basically a parking lot for vehicles and trailers and, you know, some larger.
Well, when I was there to, on a site visit, I saw a lot of construction materials. I saw vehicles parked in different places and a lot of other uh uh construction items that seem to just be lying around all over the place. That's what I'm, I'm getting at, is the site going to be uh in the rear anyway, back there? Is it gonna be cleaned up?
Yes, it is. That's my expectation. We actually started that cleanup this past week to organize and discard a lot of the excess materials that were brought from our other locations.
On the left side of the building that exists, as you're facing it from the street, there appears to be a trailer-type structure. Is that what that is? Or what, what is it? And is it gonna remain or, you know? What, what is it? Is that another storage facility or?
No, that's just the, i- it's just an office trailer for the the upcoming construction as uh we wanted a place to store our documents and things of that nature. And when we had site visits from professionals, utility companies, and areas like that, have an area to check into.
All right, is that gonna remain or is that gonna be removed?
That will be removed upon completion of the construction project and CO.
Okay, I think uh before I heard you were asking for a waiver uh for the six-foot fence, I'm I'm kind of inclined to say that it it should stay. Uh the fence is on the border, which is uh the boundary with the R forty zone, I believe. Uh but that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um so as long as you raise the topic of the thing, um um let's talk about that. Um I mean, I hear that there's, there's trees that are going to need to be removed to be able to uh construct the fence, which we really want, but I didn't hear that a fence couldn't be constructed. It might be the type of fence. Is that more or less corrected?
Um we we have no objections to putting the fence. I mean, Mr. Frisco had all intentions of putting up a chain-link fence, and now he's, the board is asking more like a board-on-board. I mean, we can do it. I just thought that the, that if you did a site visit, that you would see that, you know, I I I think vegetation is always a better than a fence. Um you know, when I represented Mylon Construction, you know, it was a heavily i- intensified uh buffering we gave for the R forty zone. Um you know, I'm not here to argue with this board. If the board feels that it is needed and it's a benefit to the R forty zone, you know, we'll add it. Uh I just don't feel it was with the vegetation that was previously added, and maybe we can add a few more um Douglas fir type of trees that that would mitigate that uh that fence, but that's, that's the call of the board.
So 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 where would the fence, if proposed, be? Would it be towards, towards the back of the property? Obviously, you're building this new, new addition in the front, and the back of the property is wetlands, which are never gonna be touched, and and buffer, and wetlands buffers, and you have to go pretty far to get to the nearest residential uh area. So I don't, I don't know. If there was a detention basin or something, you'd have to have a fence, but I'm not.
No, the, the R forty zone is along the right side of the property, not the rear.
Right. Mark, isn't the adjacent property currently used for commercial use?
That I don't know.
I, I became convinced of the fence when I visited there. There's a lot of activity back there. And yeah, there is a wood, woods buffer there, but there's a lot of gaps in between things, and those are deciduous. It's deciduous vegetation to to border the R forty zone. It should be a solid fence, not a, not a, it should be a fence, a solid one, and not a chain-link one. I, I would have, I'm not confident right now, because what I, what I saw back there was not very appealing. And I hope that the new construction and everything, the built, the new building, you are very correct, as far superior to the existing building, and I think you understated it a little bit when you are on the verge of calling the existing building ugly. It is ugly. Right? So you know, there's, there's improvement, but there's a lot that seems to be going on in the back. And and that's fine. That's your business, but on the R forty side, it should be buffered to the extent that we're, that we require our ordinances require.
So that's this, that's the side as you go, um I don't know what direction it is, but more toward the high school and the church, that residence right next door, because then you got Northern Nursery to, um to the northern, I guess. Um.
It's the, the southerly property line.
Yeah.
That's the side toward the high school. This, this property is on the opposite side of the high school, right?
Yep, and I I can see that. I was just trying to figure out where the fence was, and so I assumed, and that's, that's never a good idea. So no, I mean, I agree. We should probably have it. If you have to take out trees to make it straight, um you should replace them. You'll have room. If you're going to, and this is another thing that we're gonna bring up, is that the extent of disturbance um while you, well, I'm not gonna argue whether it's as extensive as in March's report or whether, you know, you you have it right, or whether it's somewhere in between, but if you're gonna regenerate that to lawn, which I don't prefer, or letting it sort of go into natural um, natural vegetation um and succession, um or, you know, that, that's a place you could throw a few trees um if you wanted to, and and I think wouldn't, wouldn't be necessarily a bad idea. Um or if there's gaps in the buffer with the R forty, you could put them there, but I think, I think the fence, from what Bob says, um makes, makes some sense.
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I I just wanted to let Mr. Schmidt know that I, I've been muting you a little bit. We're getting a lot of feedback off of your line, so just make sure, just unmute yourself when you wish to speak.
So while we're on the topic of the fence, do any other board members have any opinions on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, head.
Now, I've been, I observed that uh five deciduous trees and seven evergreens are proposed to be removed. And some places, it says that there's a new tree planting plan. I don't have that plan. There's not a landscaping sheet in the plans. And also in the application, it says no new landscaping is proposed. So I'm trying to find out, are the replacement trees that would be required by the ordinance going to be planted, and if so, where?
Well, there must be a plan because March report refers to it, but there, there are a few inconsistencies that are noted on on multiple staff reports, not just here, that um, you know, certain things don't quite match. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll condition anything um that we do tonight based on, based on making sure that those things are corrected. And I think the applicant did not raise that as a point that he couldn't correct it, but um yeah, I think, I think, um Dave, I don't know if you can shed some light on Ted's question, because it's, it's a good one.
I'll, I'll unmute him.
Or Mark, if you can, if there was a landscaping plan that.
Yeah, it it it's on the lighting plan. Uh there are three Norway spruce, I believe, and two deciduous trees proposed.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there street trees proposed?
Street trees are already provided.
Yeah, there, there's mature street trees along the entire frontage.
But they're not gonna be affected by the new building, right?
No.
Okay.
I have a further comment. Oh, I would agree with not having a sidewalk. We, at, I think the last meeting when we had proposals in for just up the street, and we came to a conclusion that we're going to fire sidewalks on the west side of Elizabeth Avenue, but not on the east side. But I do think you should have a, a charging station for electric vehicles in case you have employees who purchase electric vehicles. And bear in mind that your building, not just for twenty twenty-one, but for many years in the future, during which, all indications are, the number of electric vehicles will greatly increase. And I would suggest having a bicycle rack, which is a pretty small uh thing to require, a lot smaller than an electric charging station. But it's a lot easier to put in an electric charging station now while you're uh doing the construction than to add it later. Uh as, and as for bicycles, the county put in lanes along Elizabeth Avenue, so people might, somebody living nearby might bicycle in to work rather than driving in. Oh, you, Mr. Frisco knows his employees and may feel that this is not very likely, but. It might happen in, in the future and a bicycle rack is not a major. Item to add. I was inclined to. Favor just filling in all the gaps in the buffer of. Coniferous trees along the southern property line instead of the fence, but. I, I understand that Mr. Thomas has examined the property much more carefully than I did. So I will. Support the idea of a fence. Close to the property line, there seem to be several. Deciduous trees right smack on the property line. So it should be back enough not to interfere with those trees, but otherwise close. And there's also, it's always possible that. The neighboring property owner will speak up during the public, during the hearing. We'll see. And I, I just don't know where you're proposing to put any trees. If you're putting in a fence, then you don't need. Added trees along the southern property line and you can plant them to the east of the. The parking area. Where. It seems to be at least somewhat more disturbed area, perhaps not into the buffer. But somewhat more than the planned parking area, so.
So I, I mean, I don't know that a fence and trees are mutually exclusive. I know the applications where we had a board on board fence and then landscaping in front or back of it. So I, I think, I think that's fine. I think they should be in both. As far as sidewalks, I agree with your point, Ted. We didn't require them on that side. There could be, well, no, if they're not required on that side, then you can ask them to contribute to the sidewalk. So I agree with the bicycle and vehicle charging station. They should be provided. Just to get quickly to a couple other points that I have, looks like the septic is being worked out, so I won't go into that. The aisle width. Generally, that's a waiver that we give, twenty-four versus twenty-six comes up in every application. In terms of site distances, profiles, utility crossings. Our instruction would be that you just work it out with CME. I mean, you can, Dave, you can tell them what you told us. Not knowing and not being engineers by trade, we're, we're not really going to be able to assess, you know, whether those are really needed. I think you should just tell CME what you told us and, and then, and then work it out with, with staff. So that's, that's sort of going to be my direction there. I think that's everything that I had. I, I do, I do echo March's report that I think we need to have. That back part, you know, kind of, kind of cleaned up. I mean, it's a construction business, so we, we expect things like that. We just need to have it. You know. Done, done, done sort of correctly and not just. The only thing I'm concerned about is if it really does go beyond the property line, that would definitely have to be remediated. There seems to be a difference of opinion. But there's surveyors who can work that out. So. If it needs to be remediated, I would, I would condition anything on, on having any encroachment be remediated. And, and that's all I had. So I'm just kind of framing that up since we're already past nine. We have another application that I know we need to get to. And we have public to open to, to sort of frame that and then. See if anybody has any other suggestions or comments beyond those, just to kind of set it up, you know.
Any other board members have any comments or questions?
All right. So I'll make a motion to open the hearing to the public.
Second.
All in favor? Hey, this meeting is now open to the public for comment on this application. Please either raise your hand in the chat feature or press star three.
Okay, we'll give the public a few moments to raise their hand. Again, as the chairman says, there's a participants window. If you're on WebEx, you can click the hand, raise hand function, or if you're calling in, star three. I'm not seeing anybody wishing to comment or ask questions.
Okay, seeing no takers, we will, I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public. If I can have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This point, I just want to ask the applicants if they have any further comments. If not.
Yeah, Richard. We would like to proceed. As Mr. Schmidt testified, the LOI is about to be issued. Unfortunately, because of the COVID nineteen, the DEP is very, very slow. Amy. Jones was out there and the, it was staked out. And the wetlands person from the D, oh, DEP came out, had no problems. And we would like to have that, the furnishing of the LOI as a condition of approval, but we would like to proceed with construction. After we satisfy all the conditions, other than that, get your outside agencies. I note the following, there's a great distance between where the wetland buffer is now, the fifty foot. And it's testified to by Mr. Schmidt, by Mr. Ellenberger, that the. Construction is taking place between the building that exists and Elizabeth Avenue. And as you, board members know, that the. The wetlands is way in the back. So we would like to proceed there. Mr. Clark is familiar with a case called Stockle versus Edison Township. Which is a published opinion in the Law Division in two thousand by Judge. Wilson in Milsons County, which said basically that the sole control of wetlands is under the DEP. And he said the municipality. Under footnote six has no control of the wetlands. So we proceed in our own peril. But we're very confident that, you know, number one, the wetlands are not going to change anything. They're not going to change. And the construction is taking place not in the back, but in the front between the building that exists now and Elizabeth Avenue. So we're a miniscule chance of, of violating the Freshwater Wetlands Act of nineteen eighty-eight. And, but we feel that, you know, it's. Coming forth momentarily for the LOI and of course, we would supply the. The planning board with the LOI when we get it. And as you know, it's good for five years. So that's what we like to, to. Tell the board or ask the board that we be permitted. To do our construction after, of course, we satisfy the conditions that we discussed. Get the plans, get the DRCCs, Somerset Union Soil, DRCC, and satisfy the professionals.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're aware of all the, all the stuff that you still need to get. And, and I agree with Dave's comment that the Somerset County Planning Board's comments were minor. I would say this on the wetlands. I mean, I kind of agree since your building is towards the front. And not, and not in the back. And if you have a DEP wetland. Document and they've come out and, and said that it's fine. I think they would take, take precedence in terms of jurisdiction. You could simply provide that to CME and there's really, really not a problem in that case, because I don't think CME can require you to, you know, do something that, that. You know, precede state law. I mean, I would just provide the evidence very simply that you, that you say you're a physician.
Well, let me just speak to that briefly. I, I, I thought we had the question posed today. Whether the board can act on the approval without having DEP approval. And, and my response to that through Mr. Clarkin was, well, that's how we always do it. Usually applicants do not have DEP approval at the time of site plan. So if it's approved tonight, it'd be subject to getting DEP approval. But what I can, what I can tell you is, is, you know, the way that we normally do things here. Is it's one thing to get your site plan approval. Before getting your outside approvals like DRCC and DEP. But we don't allow site clearing to start unless you have those approvals in hand. And usually site plan approval and can start a construction is several months apart. So I'm just informing the board, that's the way we usually do it. And, you know, applicants proceed on getting the different, you know, satisfying the conditions of the approval after their board hearing. And they have to get the proof of the DEP and DRCC before they start clearing the site. Again, I'm just informing the board that that's how we usually do it.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. And I think that. You know, what, what CME seems to be asking for is, is an LOI for the freshwater wetlands from the DEP. Based on what the applicant's testimony is, it sounds like they have that. They have something from the DEP. If they have a handshake agreement, that's not good enough. They need to actually get documentation from the NJEP. But you're right, they need to provide that along with all the other agencies' stuff before they can, they can actually. Get, get approval to, to start a construction. But you're right, we, we do make those, these approvals when there's outstanding reports, mostly from Somerset County or. You know, the, the, the DRCC or, or sometimes the DEP or the DOT, if it's a, if it's a road. But that's under their jurisdiction. So that's, that's, that's always been the case. You're right, Mark. So. I, I just thought based on their testimony, they, they could just hand something to CME and, and be done with it.
I'll just chime in that it's certainly within this board's discretion. To condition. Its approval upon obtaining all other necessary governmental approvals. And to follow the usual procedure that Mark has outlined that no construction occurs until all of those approvals have been obtained. I can tell you though, I have seen other municipalities that have allowed an applicant to proceed at its own risk, but this is totally within your discretion.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think, I think it works conditioning any, any action on, on that. I mean, you do that. I think for most. Applications, we always take condition on satisfying all outside agencies. Staff reports, you know, working out things like utilities and site lines that we can't really opine on. So, yeah, I agree that, that would certainly be a condition. I think in this case that would be appropriate. All right, so. I guess we're done with the public and just want to ask the applicant, do they have anything else to discuss or we make a motion?
We don't have anything additional. I'm, I'm not next to Phil. Phil, do you have anything?
I, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So was the decision that. We could begin construction with the proper approvals from, from Franklin. Without the actual letter, or do we have to wait until that's acquired?
I, I think the thing that we got was that. And, and based on what Mr. Clarkin said, that we, we could definitely. Ask you to produce that, that LOI. So I think, I think that's, that's where we're at. Like you said, if you had DEP at the property, it really shouldn't be that big. I can't imagine they would give you a, not some piece of paper or a handshake agreement. I know unless it was somebody's, you know, friend of a friend that came out and said, wow, you know, I think it looks good. That, that's not going to work. So. Please produce the documentation.
Phil, I'm sad that the, the DEP did go out there. I mean, I'm concerned that some of these DEP wetland LOIs take a year, a year and a half to two years due to the COVID nineteen. There was a site visit, which is, which is nice. So. I'm hoping they will issue the letter in the next couple of months while we get the other approvals. And if, if there are any delays, we'll have to come back. We'll have to say, we just can't get the DEP approval because they're, they're not moving. So I'll cross that bridge when we get there and hopefully have to cross it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they'd been out, you probably have, you know, some, some head start and can, can hopefully get it, get it fairly quickly.
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a, a, a motion from the, from the board. If there's no other board comment.
Dave, could you please drop your screen? And then mute yourself. Thank you.
If I could just suggest whatever motion is made, just if you can review your notes and we can just go through what some of the conditions are, because I think there were a number of issues that are still kind of out there.
And the waiver request.
Exactly.
All right, maybe I'll take a stab at it. So. I, I would make a motion to approve the application. Conditioned on the satisfactory. Responses to all staff reports. And all outside agencies. I would further condition that the applicant would construct a fence. Of a six foot high solid fence. Provide bicycle rack and charging and vehicle charging station. And to. Produce an LOI. For the wetlands delineation. And to work out further, we'll grant the aisle width waiver because that's always been done. Site distances and profiles for the roads, the utility crossings, to work that out with CME and staff. Did I miss anything, Jim?
Are we requiring a sidewalk donation?
Well, if we, we're not, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I was assuming we couldn't because we. I don't know. Maybe we can. If we can, then I would say that we could use that donation to construct the sidewalk on the other side of the street. But I'll defer to Jim on whether we can, we can ask for a donation since I don't know that there was intent to put a sidewalk there.
The, the answer is that you can. Legally request the contribution for the current value of what the construction of the sidewalk would be.
Then I would make that as a further stipulation.
If that's the motion, I'll second it.
I would ask that simply that they indicate on the plans where they're planning, planting additional trees. I just studied the lighting plan. Again, it's very clear what trees are being removed. It's not clear. They should, you know, fulfill the usual new plantings required. Based on the trees that are being removed.
Can the applicant, I'll, I'll amend my motion to include figuring out the landscape plan as well as any other discrepancies. I figured that was kind of covered in. Complying with all staff reports and outside agencies, but since Ted called that out twice, I'll just say. Make the landscape plan. Consistent.
And Mike, excuse me if I missed it. Did you mention the fence or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're requiring the fence.
Okay, so Bob Thomas had seconded the motion before. So does he need to second it again, or can I, can I just go ahead and call the roll?
I'll second it with the amendments.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafi?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Jennifer, thank you.
Carls Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Sammy Siobhan?
Yes.
And Chairman Rossini?
Yes. All right, so we'll, I don't know how much Peter, how much time Peter needs to get everybody on and everything set up. Hopefully it's not much, but let's just take a quick five minute break. It's nine twenty-two, nine twenty-seven, we'll start. And I know Peter knows the drill, so he'll probably make things pretty concise. So let's, let's go ahead and do that. We'll come back at nine, nine twenty-seven. Let everybody get set up.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. Thank you.
So Mr. Lanford, I have yourself, I have Justin Drysdale, I have Daniel Miola, David Von Steppenback, and Sean Moransky. Anybody else?
That is it. Mr. Drysdale probably will not need to testify, but you can bring him in as a panelist. I intend to call the remaining individuals.
Okay, all right.
Peter, do you have exhibits to get up on doing that before we come back?
Mr. Miola will be presenting exhibits. I'm sure Mr. Healy will turn the screen over to him when appropriate.
Okay, so you don't need to get anything up right now?
I think we have to be down until after the witnesses are sworn. But if Mr. Healy wants to turn the screen over to Dan Miola, he'll be ready to go at that time.
Okay, sounds, sounds good.
Done.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, Peter, I think we can get started.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is B S R E P three seventeen Schoolhouse Road LLC. This is an application to redevelop the corner of Schoolhouse Road and Belmont Drive. The property is currently with an existing building on it, which used to be known as the A T and T Building. And it ultimately was purchased by the New Jersey Chinese Community Center, Inc. And housed various charter schools on the site from time to time. The application is to demolish the building and to construct a warehouse. There are three variances that we will be seeking. I will briefly outline them and then we'll get into the testimony concerning the variances. We do have a, they're all C variances. The first one is for the number of parking spaces where your ordinance requires one hundred and forty-four spaces and we're proposing one hundred and thirty-eight. We're also seeking an impervious coverage variance. Sixty percent is permitted and we are seeking sixty-seven point nine percent. And also your ordinance allows two driveways and we are proposing three. I hope to go through the testimony very quickly. I do have three witnesses. I have a site engineer, the architect, and our planner to justify the variance. I will call Mr. Miola as my first witness.
Good evening. I guess I'll be sworn in first.
Wait, Dan, Mr. Clarkin will swear you in.
Jim, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
I forgot. I'm sorry. My apologies. Raise your right hand. Somebody swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Daniel Miola, M I O L A, Langen Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc., three hundred Kimball Drive, Harsepany, New Jersey, zero seven zero five four.
Daniel, are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have a license in the state of New Jersey. The license is in good standing. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Villanova University, a master's degree also in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology.
And have you appeared before numerous planning boards?
Yes, yes, but this is my first time in Franklin.
Okay, I would offer the testimony of Mr. Miola as an engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Very accepted. With a lot of good local schools with the engineering, we had a Temple grad, now we have Villanova. Good job.
They're, they're all crossing the river into New Jersey. Mr. Miola, can you describe the subject property and what's currently there?
Yes, the subject property is a single lot, lot number thirty-five point one one. It's a thirteen point eight acre site at the intersection of Belmont Drive and Schoolhouse Road. It has a one-story office building that's approximately ninety thousand square feet. Surrounding that office building is about four hundred and fifty car parking spaces. Surrounding the site itself, to the west is an office building. There's undeveloped land to the south, to the east, a warehouse, and then to the north, an undeveloped site that's recently received approval for a warehouse development. And I'll add that the site is in the B I zone, the Business and Industry Zone, which permits warehouse uses like the one we have proposed tonight. And so now I will, I'll share my screen to bring up my first exhibit, which is a rendered version of the site plan.
And we have them marked as A one, Mr. Clarkin?
As soon as I can see it, I can see it now. We'll mark it as A one.
Thank you.
And this is a rendered version of the site plan, which is part of the plan set, which was submitted in conjunction with the application and is in possession, hopefully of all the board members.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, can you just take the, take the board through the site plan, please?
Sure, sure. The first, just to orient everybody, north is to the right of the screen. So to the south, you have Schoolhouse Road. And on the bottom of the page, which is actually Plan East, is Belmont Drive. So as we indicated, this is a rendered version of our site plan. We're proposing to demolish the existing one-story office building, demolish all the, the parking associated, all the site, site features that existed on the site and redevelop it for a warehouse and associated parking, loading docks, and trailer parking, which is shown on this exhibit. The warehouse itself, the size proposed is two hundred and four thousand seven hundred seventy-two square feet. Within that, there will be sixteen thousand and seven square feet of office space, which is about eight percent of the floor area. Important to note that this warehouse is a, and this project is a speculative development. And there's no identified tenant at this time. So the, the site plan's been laid out to provide car parking along the parts of the site that front the public roads. We have sixty-five car parking spaces along the, the Schoolhouse Road frontage and another seventy-three car parking spaces on the part of the site that fronts Belmont Drive. To the north or, or Plan Right, after the car parking area, we have twenty-nine spaces that are devoted to trailer parking. And then on the west of the site, which is to the top of the page of the exhibit, there are forty-four loading docks for the building. We'll also have two drive-in doors or drive-in ramps associated with that side of the building. Also, I'll note that one of the dock positions will likely be used for a trash compactor, which will be serviced by a private waste hauler that is paid for by the owner. Just to get into the, the circulation of the site, access into and out of the site will be provided from Schoolhouse Road and Belmont Drive. We're proposing three driveways, one to the southwest part of the site along Schoolhouse Road, and then two that will be used to access Belmont Drive on the northeast part of the site. A variance is required for the number of driveways proposed. Two are permitted and three are proposed. We're really proposing the third driveway for the seventy-three car parking space lot along Belmont Drive, the Belmont Drive frontage. That will be a car-only driveway. And we think that the, the extra driveway, just to have that additional separation between cars and trucks, would be a good idea for this layout. And for that reason, we're, we're seeking relief for the third driveway tonight. All the driveways are proposed to be full-access driveways that will allow for both left and right turns. From a traffic perspective, a traffic statement was prepared for the application and submitted. This report compared the traffic generated from the existing office building site to, to this warehouse development that's proposed. And the conclusion of that statement was that there will be a significant decrease in site trip generation during both weekday peak hours, both the morning peak and the evening peak. Moving on to signage, two building-mounted signs are proposed. The number of signs comply with the ordinance. We also are proposing two monument signs, one at the northern Belmont driveway and the other at, to the, the southern School, Schoolhouse driveway. These signs also fully comply with the ordinance with respect to their size and setback from the road. From a stormwater perspective, the project has been designed to meet the requirements of Franklin Township, Somerset Union, Erosion Control District, and the D R C C requirements for stormwater management. So the, these regulations, all three of them require water quantity, water quality, and groundwater recharge components. And the design will meet these requirements through the use of, of three proposed underground basins and two underground water quality treatment devices. Two of the underground basins will be located in the truck court on the west side of the site. And then a third basin will be located in the trailer parking area on the north side of the site. These basins will ultimately discharge into the existing pond that is shown at the, the top right part of this exhibit, which is northwest of the site. This pond is actually technically not part of the property, but that is where all the drainage goes today. And an easement agreement will be executed between the applicant and the owner of the, the pond in order to accommodate the design of the site. From a utility perspective, sanitary water, electric, gas, and telecommunications services will connect to existing services in Belmont Drive. Now to touch on both landscaping and lighting, the landscaping has been designed to fully comply with Franklin's landscaping requirements. In total, we are proposing two hundred and forty-five trees as well as a variety of shrubs and ground cover. Most of the landscaping will be focused along the frontages, both the Schoolhouse Road frontage and the Belmont Drive frontage. In terms of site lighting, the lighting is also been designed to fully comply with ordinance requirements. We're proposing L E D lights mounted at thirty feet in height, both on the building and on, on poles surrounding the building. We did have one row of lights on the west side of the building that faced the truck court, proposed at a mounting height of thirty-five feet. In response to a comment from this board's planner, we will lower those building-mounted lights to thirty feet in height. We will have to add one additional fixture, but we'll still be able to hit the, the illumination levels that we're hoping for in the truck court. So we will agree to, to, to lower those lights on that western facade. Now, getting into the variances and waivers proposed in connection with this application, from the standpoint of, of the bulk requirements and statistics, a variance is requested for maximum allowable impervious coverage. A maximum of, of sixty percent is permitted and the, the project is proposing sixty-seven point nine percent impervious coverage. From an engineering standpoint, all of the stormwater, of the potential stormwater impacts resulting from the additional impervious coverage will be mitigated through the use of the proposed underground detention systems and treatment units. I already spoke on the variance requested for the number of driveways where we are permitted with two and we're proposing three. As I explained earlier, we want the third driveway for a car-only driveway along Belmont in order to better separate cars from trucks. The last variance proposed is with respect to the number of parking spaces. A total of one hundred and forty-four spaces are required, whereas this project is proposing one hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces, which is six short of the requirement. So the amount of parking proposed here falls within a typical range for warehouses. And the owner is comfortable that they'll be able to attract a tenant. with the amount of parking spaces provided on the site. Also adding the additional six spaces will, although comply with the parking spaces, parking space requirement, it will increase the deviation from the impervious coverage requirement, which would further exacerbate that variance request. The last item, although we're not showing it on the plan, in response to a comment made by the board planner, they, Mr. Healy has recommended we provide a sidewalk along the Schoolhouse Road frontage of the property, which we are willing, the applicant's willing to do. The applicant would like relief from providing a sidewalk along the Belmont Drive frontage, given that no sidewalk exists today along Belmont Drive, either in front of this site, across the street from this site, or neighboring this site. So to the degree we need a, a waiver for providing a sidewalk along Belmont Drive, that, that is requested. From the standpoint of the comment letters from the board professionals, in general, we can take no exceptions to the comments raised by, by the board planner, the board engineer, the Fire Prevention Office and the Sewerage Authority. A couple of comments I would like to address from the board planner letter. First, the board planner asked for testimony regarding a, the addition of a pickup drop-off area for ride-hailing services. Given, given this a warehouse project with employees and, and really a modest number of employees, we don't think there's a need for a dedicated drop-off pickup, pickup area for a ride-hailing service. And so therefore we've not included one in the layout of this site. Secondly, the board planner asked for testimony regarding the driveway that connects this site to the site to the west or to the top of the page. This site, as well as the neighboring site on Schoolhouse Road, which is again to the top of the page to the west, used to be both used by AT&amp;T. And so there's a lot of common infrastructure between this site and the sites to the west, including a sewer line, the pond and, and the drainages is back and forth. And they had this driveway connecting the two parking lots of the site. An easement does exist for the sanitary line, but, but no other easement exists for any of these other shared facilities. The applicant, as I noted earlier, has been in discussions with this neighboring property owner and will execute an easement to, to clean up the facilities that are shared between the two lots. But this driveway in specific will be closed between the two lots. One other point I'd like to just address with, in response to a comment made from the Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission had recommended using pervious pavement for the automobile areas in order to reduce some of the coverage. Just want to testify that we, we had that idea as well. And we performed percolation testing and infiltration testing on this site to assess the feasibility of pervious pavement. And what we found was that the site's underlaid by shallow rock and really is not a, the, the, the subsurface conditions are not conducive to infiltration facilities such as pervious pavement. So we, we've instead designed the site and specifically the water quality treatment of the site to really be done through the use of underground treatment units. And that concludes the direct testimony that I have for tonight.
I just have one, one question, Mr. Maiola. You touched on Mr. Healy's report concerning the issue of the sidewalk on Elizabeth Avenue and the request for no sidewalk on Belmont. As part of that same comment, number eight, he talked about the interconnection between the parking lot and the walkways. And can we provide interconnections and sidewalks onsite? And also can we provide some area for bicycles?
So as part of doing the sidewalk along Schoolhouse Road, we can provide a, a, a direct connection from our, our sidewalk right to the, to the south of the building, to that sidewalk on Schoolhouse Road. We'll also do the, the bike racks. And the applicant is also planning on installing the infrastructure for the electric vehicle chargers.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness. Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can go through my other two witnesses very quickly and then we can open it up to questions.
I like that idea, Peter.
Okay. I'd like to call our architect, please.
Do we see him yet?
Good evening, everybody. This is David Ammon.
David, can you raise your right hand? So I'm going to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please give the board your name and address.
My name's David Von Snappenbeck. I'm a principal with KSS Architects at 337 Witherspoon Street in Princeton, New Jersey.
Thank you.
David, you prepared the plans that are part of the plan set that is subject of this application?
I did.
Okay, and Mr. Healy, can you turn the screen over to him? I think he has the colored rendering of the building. And I'm going to ask him for, once he puts it up, the Reader's Digest version of the, what we are proposing as far as the elevations and, and I'll have a few questions of him.
Okay, he should be good to go.
It should be coming up now. Can you all let me know when you can see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
I'm, I'm actually going to show two exhibits, Peter, just very briefly. We'll look at the building plan and then I'll shift it over to the building elevations if that's okay.
Okay. And is the building plan part of the plan set that was submitted in conjunction with this application?
Yes, it is.
Does it need to be?
A2, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Markin. Go ahead.
Okay, so thanks, everybody. As I'll try to keep this as, as brief as possible. As Dan mentioned, we have a 204,772 square foot warehouse facility proposed for the site. Its maximum height to the highest roof line is 49 feet, 6 inches, which is just below, as of right, at 50 feet. The building is designed for a potential of two tenants, though as noted previously, there is no tenant currently on board to take the space. But we have designed flexibility for a two-tenant solution. Primary entrances to the building are on Schoolhouse Road at the southeast corner and then also along Belmont Drive at the northeast. Dock positions that service the facility are aligned solely on the west facade that faces the adjacent greenway and commercial property. Building structure is, as you might expect for a facility of this type, standard concrete foundations, spread footing is concrete stem walls and a combined steel and precast concrete superstructure supporting a, a single ply membrane roof system, very standard for the typology. So I'll now just skip ahead to our other exhibit, which is the building elevations.
A3, Mr. Clarkin, when it comes up?
A3 when it comes up, Peter.
So I'll just spend a minute on facade materials. So as I mentioned, exterior walls are primarily low-bearing precast concrete panels. We have areas of blazing incorporated in the facade. Blazed areas primarily surround the anticipated office spaces and also include a series of clear story windows along the dock position wall, which are not shown on this drawing, though I can show another sheet if that's acceptable to the group. We have clear stories along the dock walls that bring natural daylight onto the, the working floor of the building for occupants. The concrete panels are proposed to be painted with a high-performance elastomeric coating, which is standard for the facility type. The colors reflect the applicant's standard design colors in their, their branded materials, consisting of an off-white, light gray and blue for accents. The scale of the facades are proposed to be broken down with a series of changes in relative height and color of the precast facade panels. As mentioned previously, the main entrance areas each include 100 square feet of signage for tenant identification. And just briefly to zoom in on the entry facades, they are similar in character. Each includes, as I mentioned, slightly larger areas of glass, shading devices over the windows that speak to those spaces. I'm sorry, did someone want to? Sorry about that, folks. And we also include solid surface decorative facade panel that is intended to provide a, a stone look to further accentuate the entrances, as well as canopies that provide protection from the weather for people entering and exiting the buildings.
I have two quick questions, Dan. One, where are the mechanicals?
Mechanicals will be exclusively, in this typical building, would be occupied on the roof. And what we generally do to avoid any kind of sightline issues is when that design gets underway, it has not been prepared at this time. We will work with the mechanical design engineers to locate units such that they are not visible above the roof line from the surrounding streets.
Okay. Second question, can this building handle solar panels?
Yes, the roof structure has been designed for an additional five pounds of square foot to accommodate future solar.
So if a tenant wanted solar, they, it is available on this site?
It is.
Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness. My next witness will be Mr. Maronaski. And perhaps we could take down the exhibit. I don't think we'll need it any longer.
Is the next witness visible yet?
Yes, I am.
Raise your right hand. So I'm going to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Sean Maronski, Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services, 300 Kimball Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Mr. Maronski, you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
I guess I have a master's in urban planning from New York University.
He is accepted, Peter. It's fine to let us know more, but as long as he's certified and licensed in the state of New Jersey, it's, that's all we need.
All right, Mr. Maron.
I am licensed and my, it's current.
All right, Mr. Maronski, you heard Mr. Maiola review with the board the variances that we are seeking in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I did.
All right, and can you briefly go through them? And are we seeking these variances based as a flexible C2 variance?
Yes, each of the variances will be C2, where the benefits of the overall project outweigh any potential detriments from the variances, which I don't believe there are any. With regards to the impervious coverage variance, the design provides, the, the additional surface provides a necessary area to provide the parking spaces to service the site, facilitate circulation needs. The number of parking spaces, the deviation is de minimis, six spaces of the 144 required that we are short. The 138 do address the anticipated parking, parking demand. And more spaces means more pavement, so we're striking a, attempting to strike a balance here. With regards to the driveways, we're proposing three, two of them on Belmont Drive. The, the third driveway goes exclusively to the car parking area in front of the office entrance, an attempt to separate some of the car traffic out from the mix of car and truck traffic to improve circulation at the site. We do address several purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A, promoting the public health, safety and general welfare. We're facilitating the replacement of what is an older building that's been used as a school, as previously described, with a modern warehouse facility. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including warehouse uses. We're providing for development that is permitted and that is a high-demand use. With regards to the negative criteria, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Concern with additional impervious coverage is concerns about stormwater. As Mr. Maiola described, the stormwater management plan is designed to improve runoff drainage with underground detention and treatment units applicable and consistent with the municipal and DEP regulations. The parking space is proposed, can address the anticipated demand onsite. Obviously, a site without enough parking is not viable, so this site is designed with that in mind. The additional driveway contributes to an improved circulation pattern, there's sufficient distance between the two driveways. The traffic as described would be less intense than the prior use, especially in terms of peak hours, as it would be differently distributed. The lighting plan, which, which complies and the poles will be lowered to 30 feet as described. There's no substantial detriment to the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. We're permitted in the Business and Industry Zone. And we're consistent with the 2020 Master Plan Reexamination, which talks about the goal of encouraging commercial industrial development in areas and that with access to major regional highways and in established areas of which this area is. We're locating major employment in areas where it has the least impact on residential uses and maintaining size of industrial districts to ensure adequate space for light industry and warehousing, such as what is proposed. So for the reasons that I've outlined, I do believe that each of the requested variances can be approved under the C2 criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, everyone, who provided testimony. I'll open it up to the board for questions right now.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Go ahead.
With regard to the planner's testimony, Mr. Maronaski, you testified that the benefits outweigh the detriment. Can you go a little bit further to indicate that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment?
Yes.
Would you address in the MOUL?
Yes, as I mentioned, this, the, no substantial detriment to the public good in terms of the concerns about stormwater, potential impacts from traffic and, and lighting, that they would not be substantial, that they would be minimal. We are consistent with the master plan and the zoning ordinance. And yes, the benefits, they're a public benefit in the sense that we are developing the site consistent with how the master plan and zoning ordinance outlines how they see development going forward. And that is substantially, I believe, outweighs any potential detriment, of which I don't see any.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jim, for that question. And anybody else from the planning board have any comments?
Councilman Chase?
Somewhat dubious about the third driveway. For one point is, you also have car parking in the northeast corner there, where the cars would enter by the most northeasterly driveway entrance. So you're not going to completely separate cars from trucks anyway. And if you didn't have that third entrance, you probably could get in two more parking places and you'd decrease the impervious surface.
So this is Dan Maiola, the, the civil engineer. One of the, so you are correct that northeastern car parking area is separated by the driveway that heads to the, to the rear of the site. And I would, I would say about, about half is on one side of the driveway that won't benefit from the third. that won't benefit from the third driveway, but there is half on the other side of the driveway that will benefit from that third driveway. And I'll add, that third driveway is exists. It's in the exact same location as the existing driveway for the office building. And given that it was already there, it's appropriately located opposite the other driveway to the east of Belmont Drive. It made sense to us to maintain that driveway for the use of those, you know, I'm going to guess 35 or so parking spaces.
Well, it's a good point that it exists. It felt that you're removing practically every tree from the site, except for a few along Schoolhouse. It did seem to me that some trees in the area just south of the third driveway could stay. It's always better to keep existing trees because they will inevitably be bigger than new ones that you plant. Apart from that, though, I commend you for the amount of landscaping, of new planting that you propose.
Thank you. I will just like to clarify, there are two trees to the south of that third driveway that we are planning on keeping.
Good.
But yes. Yeah, appreciate that comment. And we did try to landscape the site appropriately where we could. And we do, I'll add, meet the tree replacement requirement of the township.
Yeah, Daniel, that's why I'm a little confused, maybe from Ted's comment versus the comment in Mark's report, number 10, that the plan satisfies the tree requirements of chapter 222. The plan results in a tree replacement requirement of 245 trees, and 243 trees of qualifying size are proposed on the plan. Is that true or not true? Or are you considering trees to be shrubs?
No, that's correct. That lines up with my count. There are 245 trees proposed on the site, and that does not include the trees that are, the existing trees that we're proposing to keep, which are, you know, I'm going to guess about five or six along Belmont Drive and three on Schoolhouse Road.
So essentially, you're going to replace everything that you're taking out somewhere on site?
Correct.
Which is fantastic. I mean, you know, I don't even, I think that's actually better than what the chapter 222 actually states, which does some math based on the size of the trees and the quality of the trees, et cetera. So appreciate that. I wanted to just ask one thing about the driveway. I mean, it's probably, I understand why that third, what we're calling the third driveway, the car driveway, why that's there, and what your intent is for it. I just wondered, you know, based on Ted's comment about impervious coverage, if it's actually not the driveway, the truck driveway, let's just call it that, on Belmont, that would actually be better if you had like that driveway and you bifurcated so that cars go into the lot, and any trucks that go, they would just go straight. And that way, it would serve two purposes. You'd only have two driveways, and you wouldn't need that variance. Now, I don't really have any objection, strong objection to that third driveway, because I see the intent, but I'm just wondering, and it's there, so maybe that makes a difference, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll say that the fact it's there did make a difference for us. And ideally, in a perfect world, you have separate driveways for your trucks and your cars. Now, you know, it's not a perfect world, and we all share the road with trucks when we drive. So, you know, to the degree we can provide a little onsite separation, we strive to achieve that. But it's, you know, it's a it's not a requirement, and it's more of a, and, you know, it's more of a desire. And that third driveway does add that benefit for those car parking spaces. And those are the ones that are proximate to the office area at the northeast corner. So those are the ones that will be used first for that corner.
Yeah, and so given the design of your site, that third driveway, what we're calling the third, probably, unless you redesign your site, wouldn't be useful for trucks at all because you've got a straight shot with that driveway, again, to the right of it, if you will, back to where the trucks would go. And then you have that sort of more or less dedicated driveway for the cars. And it's there. I understand why you want to make the one, I guess what we really, really would consider the third, which is the truck driveway. That would really be the third, since that other one already exists, so at least in my view of the world there. So. One other question on the impervious coverage that also Ted raised. I mean, 7.9% is not, to my mind, a de minimis amount. I know you've tried everything. I really appreciate the investigating the pervious pavement to the point where you determine that it would really not achieve its purpose based on the underlying conditions. Is there anything else you could do to reduce that? And if not, I would really strongly recommend, and I don't know how much control you have over this, but a client that, you know, would install solar or would install roof gardens would be a wonderful thing. I don't know if they would be responsible for it or you, but I highly recommend those two suggestions from the environmental commission.
Mr. Orsini, with respect to the solar, as is custom in this business, the building is capable of handling solar, but that is really a tenant need or a tenant desire. So if the tenant wants solar, this building can have it. The building is designed to handle the solar panels, and if the tenants need them and want them, they will be put in.
I may say that the green roof, you know, with grass and herbaceous species that absorbs a lot of the rain on the roof is currently dear to the heart of the environmental commission. And that would alleviate the excess of impervious surface. Of course, you can't have solar and green roof in the same place. You have one or the other, I think. But you could have one on one side of the roof and the other on the other side. This building runs north-south, so it's not a question of which side.
So, just to address these comments, this project will be pursuing a LEED accreditation. LEED is a green project design standard that this project will be seeking. So there will be built-in green technologies within the building design itself. While, just a comment on the roof. While solar is pretty standard in this market, green roofs are not. And I think really for two reasons. One, you have this vast area where you can, you know, of really unencumbered sunlight, where you can really maximize the solar production. And then, secondly, a green roof requires a substantial amount of soil, which is very heavy. And a green roof on a, from a structural standpoint on this building design would be cost prohibitive. It would affect how you lay out the columns, how you design the structure itself. Whereas, and for that reason, you really don't see green roofs on warehouses. You see solar panels on warehouses.
That's interesting. I never.
That's correct.
I never really knew that. And I would assume that, despite your testimony that it really wouldn't support it, that like solar panels, it would probably be up to the client to make that happen. I mean, you're not going to build, it doesn't sound like you're going to go build a building to support green roof from the get-go.
Right.
That's right. As with, and I'm sorry to jump in on you, Dan, but as with a solar system, a green roof requires constant attention. And until there were a tenant onboard, it would really just be not feasible to maintain in a substantive way.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for that. Hopefully, the solar will be considered by the tenants. As far as, the only other thing I had wanted to address that hadn't been addressed already is the sidewalks. You're going to put them on Schoolhouse Street, our Schoolhouse Road. Belmont Avenue, you're looking for a waiver. You know, similar to the last application, I would have no problem with a waiver, but would request a sidewalk contribution, if that's possible.
Chairman, this is Charles Brown. I think the applicant should be required to put a sidewalk on Belmont Drive.
If I may address that, Mr. Brown, I did the application right next door, which is 230 Belmont, which is another warehouse, which this board heard and approved at the end of 2020. And the board did not require sidewalks as part of that project, so that if we were to put sidewalks on Belmont, they would just stop at our property line, and the next warehouse does not have sidewalks.
Yeah, that was unfortunate. We did not require it at the time, but this is a different day. And sidewalks should be more default when we look at approvals, especially through this variance, which you are requesting to prioritize a convenience for automobile traffic. And so, given the fact that we are trying to improve connections along Schoolhouse, and the normal patterns and behaviors of people walking is that that additional seven to 1,000 feet, property, 700 to 1,000 feet property furniture you have on Belmont would provide for more physical activity along that route. In addition to that, north of of Pierce Street, we have requested in the past sidewalk accommodations on properties there. So right now, it appears scattered. Your property, as shown here, is a significant portion of the block between Pierce and Belmont. If we could get a sidewalk on the frontage of that property along Belmont, if the property north of that comes and developed, that entire block on that side would have a completed sidewalk. Thus extending the walking capability and the physical activity along people on Schoolhouse Road.
Well, Schoolhouse, yeah.
So I just want to add, lastly, you talked about the LEED certification, which I think is great. But I think it would not be consistent with what LEED stands for to advocate for the prioritization of additional accommodations for trucks along with cars, but not for the accommodation of pedestrians and improve physical activity in that area.
If I may briefly address that. And I think Mr. Healy sort of pointed it out also. The intent of the sidewalk is to get the employees to be able to walk during lunch hour to the commercial node at the intersection of Elizabeth Avenue and Schoolhouse. By us putting sidewalk along our frontage on Schoolhouse, our employees can get to Schoolhouse, get to the sidewalk, and at least be able to walk to that, to the commercial establishments. The sidewalk on Belmont doesn't get us anywhere. The rest of the lot adjacent to us has already been approved without it. The further you go down Belmont, there are no sidewalks. I think if it's the intent of the sidewalk, or the thought of sidewalks, of getting people to where they can use them to go to buy lunch or to do other things, the sidewalk on Schoolhouse accomplishes that purpose. The sidewalk on Belmont does not. In addition, now you're creating more impervious coverage by putting that sidewalk in.
Is it your main entrance on Belmont?
There is a, no, there's two entrances. There's a main entrance on Schoolhouse, and there's an office component on the Schoolhouse end of the building. And there's an entrance on Belmont, which also has an office component at that end. So there's two entrances.
So the people that are leaving the entrance on Belmont, would they not also want to go on Schoolhouse to reach the destination that you're talking about?
Right, and they could do that through the site. There are sidewalks on the site that can take them all the way out to Schoolhouse.
I think it's an inconvenience. In addition to that, your site not only serves those that work in your particular place, but they serve people in the greater area. So increasing the opportunity for people to be active, I think is also something that should be considered. It's just my thought, considering that you want a variance for an additional driveway, which again prioritizes cars over pedestrians.
I don't think the driveway prioritizes cars over pedestrians. I think the driveway prioritizes safety. If we can take the cars away from the trucks, it's a safer alternative. Again, we could take that driveway out. It doesn't have to be there. But from a safety perspective, it's already there, and at least it keeps those cars away from the trucks. So it's not prioritizing cars. It prioritizes safety.
Well, as if you assume no one will be walking in the road on Belmont, which does happen. At least you will give them the ability to be out of the road and safely near your property on a sidewalk where they are protected from both your trucks as well as your automobiles.
Well, you have a sidewalk along the Belmont side of the building. So at the very least, people from this building can get out to Schoolhouse. It's just not continuous for people further north on Belmont.
So if I could just give the board a little bit more background on this issue, something that you wouldn't know because the application's not before you yet. We are, this board is going to have, and actually, correct me, Mr. Lanford, I believe this is your, the one Wiley application is yours?
Yeah, I think that's scheduled two weeks from today, yes.
Okay, so that is basically on the opposite side of Belmont from this site and from the Active Belmont application that Mr. Lanford spoke to a few minutes ago. So I'm just looking at my report on page four and seeing this site, seeing Belmont running, you know, north-south. You know, Mr. Lanford is correct that the board did not require the sidewalk along, you know, the Active Belmont site. So if it was proposed front of this site on Belmont, it wouldn't go anywhere. There is an opportunity on the next application in two weeks to require that site to have sidewalks along the east side of Belmont. And they have pretty much the entire frontage of Wiley and also have a large amount of frontage on Elizabeth. So you may want to consider maybe making that application provide sidewalks along their frontages. And then you have that big super block of Schoolhouse, Elizabeth, Wiley and Belmont largely spoken for with less gaps in that sidewalk connection. Again, I'm just giving you that background because you don't have the one Wiley application in front of you tonight.
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Mark, for that. That's helpful. And, you know, I don't really disagree with Charles at all in principle. In practice, though, my experience of Belmont is that it's not a high-traffic street. He certainly makes a great point about people working there, getting out to Schoolhouse Road, where there are things, you know, like the commercial businesses at the corner of Elizabeth and Schoolhouse. But I'm wondering if it might be more useful to get the sidewalk contribution and start connecting some of these things rather than waiting for applications to come in, or connecting them where there may never be applications. For example, if there's wetlands or something that makes a lot unbuildable, that we could, or in the past, where we waived them, and now we like to wish we could go back and take that away, we'd have more than a sidewalk fund to construct it. And to me, that would be a better use than Belmont having sidewalks. That said, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna, um, I'm not gonna. You know. Die on the hill um, of that issue. So, um, you know, it's 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 whatever the motion of the board, you know, comes out to, comes out to be. But we are at ten twenty-one and I was hoping that we could open to the public at least. Um, let them, uh, if anybody has comments, um, go about their business the rest of the evening. We could come back and 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 discuss any more board. I don't think there might be a lot of it. Um, I think we've covered the major issues, but. Why don't we open to the public and then we'll 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 sort of just come back and finish things up. So, um, I'm I'm making motion to do that. I'm open to the public on this application.
Sir, can you?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hey, this meeting is open to the public, uh, for any public wishes to comment on this application.
All right, as indicated previously, if you're participating, actually, everybody on is on WebEx. You can go to the participants window and click on the raised hand button to indicate your desire to make a comment or ask questions. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody.
I don't either. So, um, I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Sir, can you?
All in favor?
Hi.
Um, okay, so any, back to any board discussion, um. Anybody have offer any other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask two quick questions? One on the issue of the impervious coverage. Um, it was testified that this is basically a spec building. You have the twenty-nine trailer parking spaces. Um. And the thought occurred to me of whether you could in some way land bank those trailer spaces. And only build them if a tenant comes in who actually needs them. Uh, if you were to land bank those spaces, you know, that would. You know, if they were never built, that would effectively lower the impervious coverage a good amount. Any thought on that?
Mr. Haley, I did re-discuss land banking with my client because I know this board is is fond of that where it can be done. Quite frankly, the trailer storage is a necessary component of the building. But we we don't necessarily think we need all of the car parking spaces and that one parking section. Uh, which would be, uh. I think that's. It would be east of the driveway on Belmont. Uh, we could probably land bank those car spaces. Uh, and not build them unless we need them. Uh, we think that the 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 car spaces in front of the building on Belmont. And the car spaces in front of the building on Schoolhouse probably would meet the needs of our tenants. So if we're looking to land bank something, I would land bank those car parking spaces and not the trailer parking spaces.
And that's the parking lot to the, I guess, to the right of the entrance drive off of Belmont?
That's correct.
I I love that idea. Um, how many spaces would you bank? Um, just because, you know, you're asking for a variance and it's a variance we. Generally favor uh, to to construct less parking, um, if it's not required. But what would it go down to, Peter, from one thirty-eight to what?
Uh, Dan, if you want to, if you can pull up your plan and give us the number of parking spaces in that that node.
That there are twenty-four parking spaces in that node. So we're proposing one thirty-eight minus twenty-four. That would bring us to a total of one fourteen. Uh, whereas, you know, again, the ordinance uh, requirement here was one forty-four. So.
But you'd be, you'd be land banking it though, so it would remain out of the site plan. Um, and only constructed if if, yeah, if somebody, if either. There's a parking issue and we make you build it, or if some future tenant needs that, needs to to build it.
Where it might come up is if. A tenant had to shift because then. Uh, the arriving have to park somewhere different from the leaving.
What, one quick question for the engineer. If in providing the sidewalk connection from the site. Out to the sidewalk or sidewalks, um. How much, what would be the increase in impervious? Uh, right now you're at sixty-seven point nine. Any anticipation of where that would go in terms of, would it go up to sixty-nine percent?
I I can, I can run a quick uh, a quick calculation on that, uh, if you give me a sec. Um, that that would be approximately. Uh. Seventy-five additional feet. Of sidewalk. Uh, on site. Assuming a four-foot sidewalk, that's three hundred square feet. Um, we have a thirteen point eight acre site.
It's something probably in the hundreds.
It's uh, three hundred divided by six hundred thousand.
So it certainly wouldn't go above sixty-nine percent.
Yeah, that's a point oh 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 five.
I was wrong. It was thousands, not hundreds. Uh. And and so your your impervious is taking into account already, didn't the sixty-seven point nine, the sidewalk on Schoolhouse? Correct?
It it does not, uh, that that sidewalk would be in the right of way. So it technically doesn't need to be included in the impervious.
Oh, okay.
That's correct.
All right, so 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 you're constructing it is, and I would assume that if. If it were to happen that we would require you to construct sidewalks on Belmont, the same thing would be true?
Correct.
Or, okay, so this is sort of an academic exercise because it's it's really, really not affecting your variance, right?
Yeah, my question was the sidewalk going from the building out to the street would.
Yeah.
But he, but he answered that question.
Okay.
Oh, it's.
Sorry, I wasn't sure which sidewalk we were talking about this time. Um, okay. Any other board comments? Peter, any summation?
Very, very briefly, uh, I I think that the. Applicant and and Lang and Engineering has taken great pains uh, to design this site to make it the most attractive site that that it can be. Uh, we've done a great job with the landscaping, as was pointed out by Dr. Chase and also you, Mr. Orsini. Uh, we are agreeable to putting the sidewalks in on Schoolhouse. I, again, it'll be the board decision on Belmont. Uh, I. Given my two senses to why I don't think they're appropriate there, but the board will make that decision. And again, it's the board's decision with respect to that third driveway. Uh, and and while. I disagree with Mr. Brown. It's not for the purpose of 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 cars. It's it's for the purpose of safety. And I think that driveway does keep at least a certain amount of the car traffic away from the truck traffic. And since the driveway is already there, I think it makes sense to use it. Uh, and lastly, we would be willing to bank those twenty-four spaces to at least. Create a little bit more green space on the property and also reduce at least on the short term and maybe even the long term, uh, some of the impervious coverage. And I thank the board for their time and attention this evening.
Thanks, Peter. Um, be happy to entertain a motion.
I would move approval with the all of the conditions that we've specified, school uh, sidewalk on Schoolhouse. Sidewalk connection from the building out to the sidewalk on Schoolhouse. I could accept the third driveway mainly because it's already there.
What about the sidewalk on Belmont?
I think, uh, from what you've told us about, or Mark has told us about the. One Wiley Drive application that that. Might be a better place to. Generate sidewalk. Uh, I think the most important place to have sidewalk would be. Elizabeth Avenue because that's a more heavily traveled. Uh, roadway. And if there's sidewalk, if there is existing sidewalk on the east side of Belmont. Then to continue sidewalk there. Oh, yes.
So.
Station would be very different, different if we had asked for sidewalk on the the active Belmont site.
Okay, so so Ted, just to, just to clarify it in the terms of a motion. You would not require them to put sidewalk.
Not require them to put sidewalk on Belmont and the particular reason is because the site plan does show. The sidewalk hugging the building. Uh, the length of the building and would then connect out to Schoolhouse. So. Uh, people from this building would be able, even the north end, would be able to walk out to Schoolhouse.
Okay, so to come back to the motion, I I captured that, uh, captured your other points that you made before that. Any other parts of the motion uh, that you'd like before I ask for a second? Are you fine with that?
I think. Would be a sidewalk contribution?
Sidewalk contribution, yeah, I think we should do that. Um, obviously the variance is satisfying all of staff and outside agency reports. Uh, Ted, do, can you, um?
No.
Amend your motion to include that?
And and do you want to bank parking? That wasn't.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We'll put that in the motion as well, sure.
I'll second it, Chairman Orsting.
Thank you, Charles.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Carl Howe?
Yes.
Mahir Afif?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown? Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Peter. You too.
What's left of it?
Yes.
At le- at least get on the drive home.
That's a great, that's a great point. Um.
Speak for yourselves.
The scene, our next, our next meeting is is the twenty-first. And 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 we have things to, business to do there.
Yes, there's two hearings for the twenty-first.
Okay. Well, I will see everybody then. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Hopefully somebody will second that. I've heard Ted, I heard Ted second it. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Have a great night. What is left?
Right.
Right.
Good night.